Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, September 28, 2020. Prior to our call to order and roll call tonight, I'd like to indicate that we do have two of the folks who are very integral to our city council meetings, not with us face-to-face, but they're with us on Zoom, and we can see both of them, or at least Lynn's name, and we can see Carolyn Morris's smiling face. Lynn Physikas, our city clerk, are you with us, and could you hear us? Lynn Physikas, you may want to unmute yourself to let us know whether or not you can hear us and see us.
Yes, I can hear and see you.
Very good. Thank you, Lynn. And Carolyn Morris, our first ward alderman, is self-quarantining tonight, at home, I believe. Carolyn, can you see us and hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to ask our city clerk, Physikas, to roll, to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight is to approve tonight's agenda. Unless there are any additions or deletions, we will approve the agenda as printed. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Favor. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as printed. We now move into public participation. We have one person who would like to speak to us face-to-face. I have one letter that I would like to read. There were no Zoom participants, and it indicated that they would like to speak. So with that, I will ask our first speaker, Mike Embry, to please come to the podium and address. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. First of all, I'm here representing the American Legion, and myself as well. I would like to thank Mayor Smith and City Manager Bill Nicholas for their support of our veterans program in the downtown area. On September 11, we had 17 more banners in the downtown area. We now have 60 banners representing our veterans and current military in the downtown area. It's been a great success. A lot of tourists have come to town. People have come out of town to visit and walked up. One of the things that we have done...
And I'm not going to start over. And one of the things that we have done is not post where these banners are, so these people will have to walk around and look for their family member, which is a good part of seeing and learning more about DeKalb, and very successful from that same point. So we'd like to again thank the mayor and the city manager for their support. Also, we worked with a local businessman, Mr. John Pappas. We have installed an American flag and five veteran flags on the corner of Locust and First, which is kind of an entree into what we hope to be a veterans' way, and which the mayor has actually presented for us and encouraged us. And with that, we'd like to thank again the mayor and the city manager. If you have not had a chance to walk down on Locust Street, we have signs on First and Fourth that says honorary veterans' way. So it is a great support of our local community veterans. And without the support of Andy Rye and his team, we would not have been able to get the banners up or the signs up. And it is a continuation of other projects that we have in mind for the city of DeKalb, and as the mayor Smith says, "DeKalb, Illinois, the most veteran-friendly city in northern Illinois." Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thanks for all your work on getting this started in the early stages, and we're very, very pleased at how Veterans Day is taking shape and the continued growth of the banner project. So thank you very much. Our last entry into public participation tonight is a letter that we had submitted online, and I'd like to read this if I may. It's from Pamela Verbic, 803 North 10th Street, DeKalb. My comments pertain to the public hearing on taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020. It is premature to submit this bond ordinance and approval of bond counsel before the counsel, the Finance Advisory Committee, and the public have time to look at all facets of this situation. The city's ending balance in the general fund, Reserve, provides a financial cushion in the event of a fiscal downturn or the need for unforeseen delays, outlays, excuse me. The pandemic-induced economic downturn would seem to meet this definition for the use of reserve funds. The counsel is being asked to capitalize interest of $335,554, and, together with the principal of $1,460,000, plus pay additional costs to issue bonds not to exceed $2 million in order to defer 2021 debt service to 2028, 2029, and 2030. The Series 213B bond matures in 2021, and the Series 2010C matures in 2022. Does the counsel want to pay the estimated additional cost of $381,277 over the next 10 years, plus the estimated additional costs of nearly $100,000 as shown on the hypothetical restructuring to borrow $2 million to defer the 2021 debt service for 10 years? While bond underwriters look at reserves as an indicator of fiscal responsibility, wouldn't a look at the overall debt also be a factor? It's a tough decision whether to incur additional debt at a high cost or use money in the reserve fund, which will require good budget decisions for the next few years to build up the reserve in case we once again face unforeseen fiscal challenges. We will be discussing this later, this letter from Pam Verbic from DeKalb. There are no special presentations this evening. I do have one appointment. This is the appointment of Ann Schultz to the Citizens Environmental Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31, 2021. As council may recall, Ann had been a member of the Environmental Commission for a number of years. She resigned not too many months ago because her position, her job, had changed. However, she now feels that she'd like to get back on. I think she'd be good if the council agrees. She's currently a STEAM educator with NIU STEAM. Prior to that, she was a biology teacher at DeKalb High School. She's done graduate research identifying invasive species, exploring the impact of disposed pharmaceuticals on animals, and she's conducted other projects related to water quality, including mapping of the historical flow of the Kishawaki River. Ann has also participated in conservation work in Costa Rica. On a personal level, she seeks to promote and live a sustainable lifestyle, and she had been a member of the Citizens Environmental Commission since 2016. So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Ann Schultz to the Environmental Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Who moved? It was moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Ann Schultz is appointed to the Environmental Commission. Our next item, Item G, Consent Agenda. All items listed on this consent agenda are enacted by one motion and one vote unless someone would like to remove an item from the consent agenda to be discussed individually. Anybody have that scenario? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as follows. Number one, minutes of the joint city council and finance advisory committee meeting of August 17, 2020. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of September 14, 2020. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through September 28, 2020, in the amount Number four, investment and bank balance summary through July 2020. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through July 2020. Number six, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, August 2020. And number seven, hospitality recovery program update. We've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Smith, would you repeat, please, whose the motion and the second came from?
Yes. The motion was made by... Who made that motion? Oh, we didn't call for that. Oh, I'm sorry. I'd entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Verbic, that we approve tonight's consent agenda as written and as read. Thank you, City Clerk Physikas. I appreciate that. Any further discussion? Now we can have that roll call.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
That consent agenda is approved as printed. We have one public hearing tonight. We will open this public hearing at 6:14 PM. The public hearing is on the taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020. City Manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me? Is this on?
Mm-hmm.
The hearing tonight is not required by statute, but in the interest of transparency and inviting voices, and we've heard one earlier to speak to this, and other fiscal matters facing the city, we put it on as a public hearing. There's no harm done, and later on in the agenda, there is an action item relating to this. I just wanted to say a few things, and we can see if somebody else wants to speak to the content of this. So it's not lost on anybody in this room that we are suffering fiscal impact from the COVID-19 pandemic here in DeKalb, as elsewhere in this country and around the world. In August, I presented a snapshot of where we were to the council and the Finance Advisory Committee, and at that time, I posed the possibility of doing what is before you tonight, which is the possibility of removing for one year the general fund debt obligation that is in the general fund budget, which is our general operating fund, as you know, but people looking in may not know, just for one year. It's called a scoop-and-toss, not real creative, but it basically takes that and then spreads it like three stones over the last, over the end of our terms of the existing general obligation debt facing the general fund. And the good news here is that although there were some general obligation borrowings that, again, are an obligation to the general fund back about 10 years ago, those are all coming off toward the end of this decade. And so what we propose to do is not to increase the debt load, but actually to unload at the end of these terms. And if you look on the sheet that was made a part of your background, and it's in the council folder, you can see that in 2027, we get to the end of a steady line of debt service over a period of years, and again, this has been going on, depending on the bonds altogether, since about 2009. And then for three years out, about half of that annual debt service, half of that obligation then, is laddered out. Again, it diminishes to, in 2030, then $511,000, which would be less than a third of what we're paying this year and would be paying for the next eight years. So we had a mind to not increasing our debt load, but in fact, giving us an opportunity this year to keep from a deep, deep shovel full of our reserve, our general fund reserve. And why is that important? Well, let me back up, and just to set the context again, I know you're familiar with it, others looking in may not be. So we're facing about a $4.5 million drop in our general revenues this year and into next year, and about a million of that can be offset if we see the federal dollars that are, we hope, coming our way through the Local Cares Act, which is funneled through the state of Illinois, and we have applied now. We've collected all of our data on personnel, non-personnel costs relating to COVID pandemic in terms of emergency responses and so forth, and quarantining and the like, and that's from March 1 through August 31. And this is also something that can go on, but we are expecting at least a million out of that, 1.8 million that we have been, that's been allocated theoretically to us. So, cut to the chase, a lot of financial information before you, but here's the impact, and the question was raised by the writer earlier. So there are no easy decisions here. So what do you do? Do you take the chance that what we're seeing now is going to be much better in another three months, or six months, or nine months, and so forth? And to be honest, we are hoping a little bit we'll be better, and as you have seen some early projections of where we want to be at the end of 2021, there is a built-in assumption there that we will be getting back to where we were at the beginning of this year before we knew anything about COVID. But that's purely speculative at this point. Now, here are a few cautions. You have in your consent agenda tonight the hospitality program update. I promised back in March when the council took special action to forgive some of the restaurant bar tax for our local restaurants and bars, that I would do a monthly report for you. We just got the July numbers tallied up. So April was awful. May was just a slight better in terms of actual revenue. Of course, no taxes coming in at that point. June, we start to get just a little bit of tax because people had already hit that level, the top level of forgiveness. Not a lot, but overall, people were dining out and so forth, and it was promising. The ramp was pointing up again. July was down from June. So August will be important, but we don't have those numbers yet. What if that's flat? That then portends something serious for next year in our projections. Two things are important when you're looking ahead: liquidity, and do you have that reserve that can save you from COVID-19 and something more? What if the worst projections of our medical community around the country and the CDC come true? What if there is a higher spike because of the cold weather, because of other kinds of viruses and flus and so forth? What happens then? What are the political decisions that have to be made in terms of people congregating, convening in restaurants and bars and businesses and so forth? We see what can happen when that is denied or somewhat denied, and is that, how long is that going to continue? What I propose is something pretty straightforward. We're basically taking 1.8 million out of the spending side of the budget for one year only. We're pushing it back at a point where frankly, we will be relieved to see what our debt service is, and it's going to be about a third of what it is now. And the trade-off is that we have liquidity for the unexpected. We are down, our projection for the end of 2020 and also for the end of 2021 is before you on a color-coded spreadsheet that I gave you. If you look, it would be the fourth column. It says FY 2021 budget, and you see projected at the end of the year that the general fund reserve a year from now will be down about 2.2 million, from $11,154,000 and change to $8.9,894,900 and change. Are you following me?
Mm-hmm.
The last column I just threw in there today, so you can see by way of comparison. If we don't take that 1.8 million out, we're down 4 million at the end of next year. And here's something to consider. I don't really think, nobody at the state level is thinking, although we wish it was otherwise, that the pension crisis will be solved in the next 12 months. In view of that, you know where our ramp is there. This year, if you look down in the light green at the bottom, I think that's green, we have to come up, in addition to every penny of property tax this year, we have to come up with an additional $1 million to make up for our property tax, or for our obligation to the pension funds. Next year, that will be our projection, 1.3 million. So take another 1.3 million off of your general fund reserve. I think this is a prudent course. I think it's a conservative course. It is certainly not desirable and something we would wish for, but I feel very strongly that this is the best way to go, and we'll have some time to talk about it later in the agenda.
Yeah, given the fact that city council will have the opportunity to toss this around a little bit when we're asked to actually improve a proven ordinance regarding this, we are right now in a public hearing. Are there any other members of the public who are here who would like to participate in tonight's public hearing? If not, I'd like to close this public hearing at 6:25. 6:25. Thank you. There are no special considerations tonight, so let's move on to resolutions. Item J. Number one, Resolution 2020-107, that's 2020-107, authorizing the sale of real property located at 805 East Locust Street, PIN number 0823329004, in the amount of $1,500. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. We're fortunate to have a company nearing electric, which has been braving economic cycles and COVID for many years. It seems to be doing, it's a very stable employer. It's on our east end, and one thing that it's been facing in the last couple of years often happens with companies that have expanded over time and have basically run out of land space, which to store things inside. The one product that they create, which is wire, it goes on very large spindles, and those have been put where they may around their property. And the other property owners in the area, I have been concerned about how this appears, usually in a seasonal way. And the city's building department and police department and the company and neighbors have been talking about this for a while now, and in the short term, some relief has been found in the fact that they're willing to create an enclosed compound for the storage of these wire spindles. It's adjacent to their property. There's an old city wellhouse there, which they have been, don't even know, it's kind of surrounded by the spindles. Their interest is in purchasing that. It's two tenths of an acre. It's pretty small, but it would allow them to consolidate some of the outside storage, and they're working on other options, but our building department recommends this. It comes to you with a recommendation to approve.
Any further discussion on this?
So what type of enclosure are they looking at proposing?
It'll be a fence, like an eight-foot fence.
Something similar to what was going to be done across from the old city hall?
Yes.
With the folks that are moving in there?
I don't have a description of the type of fence, but it has to be an opaque enclosure.
Do they have any type of timeframe on when they'll have that?
They're intent on doing it, if they can, this fall.
Okay.
To get it closed up. That's what I'm told.
Okay.
Thank you, Alderman Perkins. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. Number two, Resolution 2020-108, authorizing payment to Sindeo Networks Incorporated in the amount of $62,345 to relocate city-owned fiber from the former city hall building at 200 South 4th Street to 223 South 4th Street, and to move an existing fiber handhole into the right-of-way at 200 South 4th Street. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Favor. City Manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. The IT suite, our department suite, serving all of the city properties and personnel is in that building. We call the city hall Annex at 223 South 4th Street. It's a two-story building. It used to be the home of the building department, engineering, and other, and we've kept it over many years. In fact, all of the traffic signals in town used to be coordinated from that building. So we have a lot of wire going in there, but one of the things we don't have is our fiber network going in there, which would be very important to monitor and so forth. We've been talking about this for a number of years, predates me, but the transition that is to occur at 200 South 4th Street does prompt us to think about this a lot more seriously, and Jeremy Alexander, IT coordinator, has gone out with a request for proposals for what it would take to relocate that fiber that's in the basement of the old city hall, and there's a vault outside, and relocate that to a place that's within the city right-of-way, and also to bring in fiber to the 223 South 4th Street. So the numbers that we received are in front of you. We've got two bids, one from Sindeo. We're familiar with them. They are working with us. We got two bids, one from Sindeo, we're familiar with them, they are working with us over by the airport. As you know, we have worked with them in the past with, with our fiber needs. And, and another company, Arrow Group out of Freeport, Sindeo was significantly lower, and we recommend the award of that relocation contract to Sindeo in the amount of $62,345. That is budgeted in the capital projects fund.
Any discussion?
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. Number three, resolution 2020-109, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb Township regarding the ownership and maintenance of the roundabout at Peace Road and Gerler Road. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. City manager Nicholas?
Thank you. I, I thought a picture is worth a thousand words. And this picture was taken about two weeks ago, and the agenda was put together in the middle of last week. If I had a picture today, and I've seen a picture today, it's all paved except for the final lift, looks very good, and it won't be more than another week or so before the road is reopened. We collaborate on the maintenance of, of roadways in that area. The DeKalb Township will have a role in helping with snow removal and, and other, other issues. And as is typical, we usually do an intergovernmental agreement with them, and it, it helps both parties from the standpoint of the township. It, it holds them harmless against any claims of poor workmanship and so forth. This is a, a contract that, actually, it's been done as part of the, the private equity that's been brought by the two major private companies down there, but of course, it's been under our supervision, and Zach Gill in particular with our engineering department recommend approval.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That concludes the resolutions portion of our agenda tonight. Let's move on to ordinances. We have one ordinance for second reading. This had been passed on first reading. Number one, ordinance 2020-055, amending chapter 38 intoxicating liquors. Section 38.07, classifications of liquor licenses by adding a new classification, laundromats. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken and seconded by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. This is interesting. We, we decided to, the council decided to defer final decision on second reading at the last regular meeting because the school board was going to meet the following night, and the, the two acting superintendent, superintendents and the, and the new leadership on the school board had not weighed in on this or didn't feel the head, so we, we awaited their review, and the review by the board resulted in their not supporting the passage of the proposed ordinance. From a practical standpoint, the, the reason this was brought forward to the council with the staff's strong recommendation was that there's, there is an anomaly here, which maybe the school board was looking at, which is that there's a driveway which is serving both the drugstore and also the laundromat. It's owned by the person who owns the laundromat, and it comes out and touches Bar Boulevard at a point within, just within that hundred feet of the school property. However, the laundromat itself, I believe, is 255 feet away, and this is enclosed, not outside, and so it more than meets the, the city's requirement for 100 feet, minimum of 100 feet between the actual activity. But technically, there's that, there's that spur of, it's a driveway, it's not a piece of the buildable lot. It is, actually, the laundromat is further by almost three times the distance between the nearest video gaming store, which is just up the road there on, on Fourth Street, and the sidewalk. So there are students, young students, older students, high school, whatever, walking by that place when school is full, and when students are able to walk to school every day, that would be very, very close, and that's legal. So I, I think as a practical matter, nothing has changed. It doesn't pose any more threat than sitting in an outdoor cafe and being within five feet of people walking on the sidewalk. It certainly meets the, the intent of your ordinance, and we recommend it.
Any discussion on this tonight? Alderman Fanouken?
Yeah, city manager Nicholas, I just want to make it very clear to the public that this is not approving a liquor license for that particular location, but would apply to any laundromat at a later date. If the applicant so chooses, he can come forward with, with a license request for that particular location, correct?
Right, but the, the council certainly has in mind that this alcohol is going to be served.
Well, I understand that, but I just.
And that's the concern of the school.
Yeah, and I just want to make it clear that it does not pertain to that location only. For example.
Could be any laundromat.
The laundromat in the junction, for example, could apply then, and, and any of the other laundromats in town. So it isn't just particular to Mr. Mason's property here, but to any of the laundromats in town, and Mr. Mason still would need to go through the process to obtain a liquor license for that location.
Correct.
Thank you.
Everybody on council understand that? Understand the answer to that question? Okay, good. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Favor? Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
No.
Verbic? Mayor Smith? Seven i, one nay.
That ordinance is approved. Thank you. Now we go to ordinances on first reading. Number one, ordinance 2020-062, amending the fiscal year-end December 31, 2020 budget. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City manager Nicholas?
Thank you, Mayor. All of these are cleanup items, and I might tell you why, in some cases, they're a little bit ahead of when the actual spending occurs, but here's how our financial policies say we have to maintain our numbers in, on, in our ERP program, our software program. It's not enough that the council says this is our intent. We need purchase orders, and you can't do a purchase order unless it's in the budget. And so what we're trying to do here is, in some cases, be prepared to write checks, and we've already written one. We have a $375,000 check for the campus cinema, which was done as part of a court settlement. There's nothing in the budget about that, so this is a cleanup. We've prevailed upon, from an audit standpoint, on, on, on the experts to allow us to take two weeks and, and come back and clean that up. And then the council is also interested in, as a result of your last meeting, in purchasing body cams. There's also no provision for that. So you can see, as you read through this, it's sort of a back and forth. There's some revenue here, and then there's some spending there. Just as fast as it comes in, it's going out. But we need your approval of these amendments in order to take care of some business that the council's already said it supports, if that makes sense to you.
Any discussion?
A senior accountant would be very happy if you would approve this.
Any discussion?
As would I.
Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you.
That ordinance is approved on first reading.
I think the move to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve. Discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Adye?
Thank you. That ordinance is approved. Number two, ordinance 2020-063, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2 million in general obligation refunding bonds, taxable series 2020 of the city of DeKalb, Illinois. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Favor. If you recall, we did have a public hearing on this earlier, but perhaps city manager Nicholas would have some additional comments.
I don't, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alderman Fanouken?
If I may, Bill, what's the, is there a difference in the interest rate on the current bond versus what the renewed bonds would be?
Yes. The, and I meant to mention this earlier, so right now, we're in that, you know, until you actually go on the market, we're, we're betting on some numbers that may be up and down. If we had done this five days ago, the interest rate for the new bonds would be somewhere around 1.75%.
Okay.
And the other ones are higher right now, slightly. And the bond series are various, and they're across four geo-bonds, so, and they go in multiples of 5,000 or $10,000, so the average congregate is somewhere a little bit higher than that. As of today, that 1.75 went up to 1.78. It may be down a little bit, so I just, I just want you to know that the sheet that I gave you is only as good as the day it was printed on, just so you know that.
I understand the volatility of the bond market, but I was just wanting to get a feel for it. Thank you.
So that's the best, that's as finite as I can get right now. We'll, we'll get one of these at the end, and then we'll be able to answer that question definitively.
Thank you.
I have two questions.
Is that Alderman McAdams?
No.
Oh, yes. Carolyn, hi, yes.
So my first question is, what is our reserve fund balance, and what does our policy say regarding requisite balance of the reserve fund?
The reserve fund balance at the end of 19, that would be the, the last set balance, was around 10? It was about 10.5. I don't have that in front of me, but our, our budget projection for the end of the year before COVID was 11 million for fund balance. The, the balance, the fund balance policy that the council set in 2018 was that we were to retain 25% of the annual expenditures for the general fund in reserve. And if we did not proceed with this, we would be down 1.8 million beyond what we have, we are currently projecting, which is about a 2.2 million, and so it's about a $4 million loss, which would put us at about 19% rather than 25%, if that helps.
Yes, thank you very much.
Sorry, you don't have this. I think that it might have been appended, but.
Any other questions? Alderman Morris?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Favor, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just going to make, I guess the way I'm looking at it is, we have a, a reserve account that we're going to use on a rainy day. We're sitting in the middle of the rain, so we could spend, you know, instead of refinancing, we could use those funds. The problem is, we don't know how long the rain is going to last, we don't know how deep the water's going to get. As of today, there's still no hope for a vaccine. I mean, there's hope, but there's no confirmation that we're going to have a vaccine at the end of the year, we're going to have a vaccine first quarter. I think I read in the state, there's several counties that are actually increasing. So the way I look at it is, I think we maintain our reserve balance and refinance the debt obligation just so that we can, again, you know, keep that money until, you know, we, as, as we need it going forward, because we don't know when the end is coming right now. If there was, if there was more clear direction, maybe I would suggest not to, but from where I'm sitting and what I see today, I think this is a great opportunity.
Alderman Perkins?
I guess my, my question is more of the, the financial community landscape. So how do they view, do they view long-term debt differently than reserve balance? Because looking at our debt historically, five years ago, we had 24 million in long-term debt, and we've, we've whittled that down to the point where we're at 17 now, and with our most recent financial statements. And with, if we do this, basically, we'll go from taking, call it a million off a year, to this year, basically, ending up with what we started at, and refinancing it over the balance, the back end of the loan. So does the financial community view that differently if our, our long-term debt remains steady and our reserve goes up? Do we have any more leverage now than we would have if we don't do anything? There's a lot there, I know.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's, it's all a piece. It's hard to separate because it's all together. You've made a good point. So a couple of things. We're, as you know, we're, we're up for a, a bond review because the, the city was put on a watch, the rating was put on a watch list by the, by Moody's back in 2018, and they usually have about two years before they would review that watch designation, and even if we weren't doing this, we would be up for some type of a review. I wish we had faced it without COVID. I think we'd be in a pretty strong position. Our, but our, our biggest bogey from the standpoint of people who might buy our bonds from anywhere in the world, by the way, they, they could care less about DeKalb, they're looking at a price, and they're looking at the offering and the amount, they like the quantity. This isn't hundreds of millions, this is, you know, 1.8. But the price will probably be right. So what, what would be their concern about our, our fiscal situation? Our, our biggest concern, and their biggest concern, has nothing to do with the size of our debt. It has to do with the pension crisis, which is eating up the most reliable source of revenue we have for our general obligation, our services that are our obligation to our community. And as you can see, that, that revenue source is now totally compromised. We don't see $1 of that for any of our operations, plus we have to dive into our sales and use taxes in addition to it every year, and have been doing this now for five or six years, and next year will be at an all-time high. So being able to hold some kind of reserve in that, in that circumstance is very important, I believe, and I think they will consider that. There are other communities of our size that. There are other communities of our size that are looking at borrowing, to borrow their way through the next year or two. I don't recommend that at all because we do have a, a pretty strong reserve, as Alderman Favor was saying. This is a one-year gambit here. We are, we are, we have every reason to be confident that we're gonna see an expansion in our EAV this time next year. And we'll see some more property tax. Most of that from Farrara, although we'll see what happens with the assessment valuation south of the road. There won't be occupancies to build on, but I think we'll get some benefit for that. It won't be a bonanza, but it might help us, if nothing else, offset that pension impact if there is no legislative solution to it. But we'll still have, let's say we totally break even. That pension impasse would cost us 1.3 million out of our reserve. Boom. And let's say it's only, it only costs us a million. Well, there's, there's 300,000. So right, it, it's a, we're not winning that battle. So I think this is, considering that, as, as Tony said, the, the rain is still raining and we don't know if it's gonna snow and rain and every other thing on top of us. So I, I think it's best to be liquid, keep a strong reserve and realize that we've, the council and the previous councils have been pretty responsible. This, first of all, it's impressive that it's a level debt service. That's terrific considering the multiple years that money was borrowed in the 2010s. And I think we're in good shape going forward and we have a, a tough year and we're, we'll get through it if we do this. If we don't, as Alderman Morris was suggesting, we're in violation of our policy. So right away, we lose whatever bonus points we have with the rating agency. We, the council doesn't have the courage of its convictions. That's how they'll look at it. At least this way, we have the courage and we are in intent on maintaining a reasonable balance for what's unforeseen to come. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Also, to Alderman Morris's point, you know, at the end of 2019, we were in a position really looking very, very good. We were well over our 25% reserve fund number. We would have, we were. And then COVID hit in March and April of, of 2020. And I respect Pam Verbic. You know, she was a former Alderman here for the city of DeKalb. She certainly knows her numbers, if you will. And I think even she had to ask the question, saying that it's a tough decision whether or not we incur the additional debt or whether we dip into our, into our reserves. And so she realizes that this was a tough decision for council to make. I, I think it's, I would certainly concur with the recommendation because I think it's just the stopgap measure that makes sense at this point. And so that's my feeling on it. Alderman Verbic?
Yeah, it's really that $400,000 plus cost to preserve our fund balance. And again, I agree with everyone that's commented about looking into the even near future. Sitting here a year from now, what will this look like?
Right. Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finoukin.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Adye.
Do we desire to waive second reading and pass this tonight?
Please, please do. It's part of the schedule to get in the market.
Move to waive second reading and approve. Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finoukin and seconded by Alderman McAdams, that we waive second reading and approve. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Perkins.
No.
McAdams.
Yes. Yes.
Verbic.
No.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Finoukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Sixaye, twone.
That ordinance is approved. Thank you. Our last item on tonight's agenda before we do go into executive session is reports and communications. This allows our council members to make any reports or any comments they'd like. Prior to that, I would like to suggest that we get sort of a round robin discussion here as part and parcel of perhaps your reports. We've had a lot of inquiry from our citizens regarding trick-or-treating on October 31st, which falls on a Saturday this year. And I think, I, I think we need to have a discussion and see if we can raise, reach some kind of a consensus tonight as to what, over the next few weeks, we can let the residents of the city of DeKalb and those kids who want to get out there trick-or-treating, if that's our plan, what our plans are. So I'm gonna open it up for discussion. Let me just begin, if I may. These are just a few thoughts that I have. I think first of all, we have to realize that trick-or-treating has been and should continue to be a parental responsibility before they send their kids out and about into the neighborhoods. The CDC has certainly said that if we do something just can, as we have in the past, as I've trick-or-treated and as you've trick-or-treated, this falls into the high-risk category. Okay? My sense is that we can have a hybrid here that makes some sense. So I would recommend that we consider approving letting the kids go out, wearing cloth masks, perhaps underneath their Halloween masks, which would assure them some, some protection during COVID. I'd also suggest that residents who feel uncomfortable with having kids come up to their stoop or up to their door can do one of two things, or one of three things, or one of four things, I guess. They could simply leave their lights off, although this is during the day. Leave their, their porch lights off, which would perhaps indicate that, that they, they just aren't willing to participate in trick-or-treating this year. They could throw, put some candy out on the front porch or down at the end of the driveway. It's been suggested they could put this together in little goody, goody bags, if you will. So I, I think we would, if we go along with, if this suggestion makes any sense, we would give some responsibility to those who are in their homes. And I think in the past, we've pretty much stayed the 4 to 7 p.m. timeframe. Again, 4 to 7 seemed to work during the course of the week when that would give parents the opportunity to, if they worked till 5, for example, they'd still have a chance to get their kids out. I, I would like to at least have us consider maybe an earlier 3 to 6. By 7 o'clock on October 31st, it might be starting to get dark at 7. So 3 to 6 might make a little bit more sense. But those are just a few random thoughts that I have. I'd open it up to any further discussion. Alderman McAdams.
Well, nobody, nobody wants to be the Grinch who stole Halloween, but I think we have to be very careful here and take all the precautions to make sure that we protect the kids. We don't want to have something happen that, that anyone is harmed by it or that anyone faces liability for it. And I'd just like to ask every resident to take the time, to take all the precautions necessary to make sure that this is a safe Halloween.
Thank you. Any other thoughts regarding trick-or-treating? Alderman Perkins.
So, so is the thought that we would just offer some guidance on what we would like to, to see? Is that kind of what we're looking for?
I think so. That would make sense to me. I don't know if we need to go into an ordinance and, I don't think we have some further discussion. Again, we have, what, 30, 30-some days yet before, before the actual date, which would give us at least one, if not two, city council meetings prior to Halloween. It would also give us the time to get the word out to media and the social media community. Alderman Verbic?
And I think trick-or-treaters often go from community to community nearby. So I think if there's any way that we could coordinate our efforts with the county. And so DeKalb is doing what Sycamore is doing, as Cortland is doing, as Malta is doing. I think that that would be preferred so that the families know this is what's happening in this general region.
Yeah, I think this city council is not unique in the sense that other, other councils across the county will be getting, will be getting the same questions from, from their residents. Alderman Finoukin?
Well, just a quick research in the last couple of days, you know, it's kind of varied greatly town to town, you know, across Illinois, Joliet's doing it one way, Alton's doing it some way else. You know, the other thing that comes into play, you may have read in the paper this afternoon that the region that includes DeKalb County hit that 8% magic mark. And we may have further restrictions being implied. So I really don't think that we need to make a decision tonight, but I think we do need to make it in two weeks. That way, there are, you know, 19 days prior to Halloween, so there's plenty of time to get the word out so people understand what we're doing. And that also gives us time to see what the Illinois Department of Public Health has to say. If we do go with further restrictions, I mean, that may become overruled, whatever we try and do at this point.
Well, you know and I know, and all of us know, that as, as it relates to COVID, what is mandated today may change tomorrow. So it is a sort of a, a fluid situation, if you will. But I, but I'd like to get some consensus, if you will, that, that we, we do want to move forward, keeping in mind that we urge parents to use their best, their best parenting, if you will, before they send kids out. Yeah, Tony?
I, you know, some of the things I have seen people post online or, you know, suggestions is, you know, that the homeowner is wearing a mask and wearing gloves, maybe when they hand out candy, prepackaged, obviously candy. It's hard to have kids wearing a mask, but if they, try and keep them socially distanced or if you can, get them to wear a mask, have them wear a mask. I like the idea of having, again, if you're not wanting to participate, you know, leave your stoop light off or whatever so that people don't come and ring your doorbell all night long. Or you can put up a sign, you know, we're not participating or something. So I, you know, I think the, those that want to participate in trick-or-treating, you know, they should have options to do so and even leaving candy out at the end of the driveway. I think that's a great, great example.
Alderman Morris, I know you have a brood at home. You're probably anxious to get out and trick-or-treating. Do you have any thoughts?
I do. So I did put out a survey when I first realized this was a consideration. And I had 425 responses to that survey. I was told it was flawed. People could have made double responses to the survey. So, you know, we're taking it with a serious grain of salt. But it was, 79% of people were in favor of the, which I, I made very clear, it was the high-risk option to just leave Halloween as it is. And so 79 people, 79% of people were in favor of that option. So, and, you know, I think it does come down to personal responsibility to some degree. I think as a city, of course, we want to be very responsible and we don't want to see that spike and, right, like we talked about in the newspaper today. But, you know, I think the Bible verse, "Let your yes be yes and your no be no," comes to mind. I think it's, it's difficult for us to say to the community, "No, you can't do this." And then we have no enforcement anyway. Are we going to be ticketing children? Are we going to be ticketing families? Like, that, you know, that seems, you know, my, my children's father has told me he doesn't want them trick-or-treating. So, so we're not going to be trick-or-treating personally. But, you know, and things could change as time goes on. So we have to keep this in mind. Sorry about the kids in the background. But yeah, we have to keep this in mind and we have to understand that it's a fluid situation. And I, I think the big trouble is the social pressure that we're gonna receive from our children begging us to go out and trick-or-treat because they see other kids doing it. And so I think, you know, as a city, that's where our responsibility comes into play, where we feel like, well, we don't want to be making the wrong social pressures. So I think that's an important factor. So I don't know, maybe we want to say that we want to remind people that, that trick-or-treating is high risk and, and leave it at that. I'm not sure.
Thank, thank you, Alderman Morris. Any other comments? I think what the consensus I've got is that we, we feel comfortable with, again, advising parents that they should do what they feel is best for their children. And we should encourage those folks who are going to meet the little ghosts and little goblins to do what they feel most comfortable with, not only for themselves, but for, for the kids. Bill, did you have a comment?
Well, just, we've been getting a lot of calls and inquiries at, at City Hall. And just so you know that, I think if you wait for two weeks, people will have already made judgments, as some of you have been saying, gone out and spent a little bit of money, in some cases on little costumes, in other cases not. Taking an official position, considering that the CDC is actually declaring this a high-risk activity is problematic. So if nothing else, if we're gonna do something in an advisory way, we might just refer people to the CDC guidelines and we can publish those verbatim in, on our website and leave it at that.
I was looking at, I was looking at CDC guidelines today.
That, that then leaves it up to.
High risk, moderate risk and low risk.
That then leaves it up to parents, as you said, to, with their minor children, to make good judgments. As, as Alderman Morris said, we're not gonna be enforcing, we're not gonna have police officers arresting children and so forth. It's not gonna happen.
Alderman Perkins?
So I think that summarizes it pretty well then, is that we're going on a path of not doing something locally that's going to be over the top of what the state and/or the CDC are going to do. We're gonna let them stand on what they're going to do and leave it at that.
And I think in the interim too, Greg, what we're gonna try to do is to see what some of the other municipalities in our region have already done or are thinking of doing. And I also, I'd like to, personally, I'd like to see what, if any of them are thinking perhaps of having daylight hour things so that this doesn't spill over into something past sunset.
Alderman McAdams?
I did speak with the mayor of Genoa about this issue and he said they're not doing anything different except that they are putting the police out on the street in case there's an issue. But they are not putting any additional restrictions on anything.
Thank you.
There you go. I might point out that you'll hit daylight, the end of daylight savings time before October 31st. Unless I'm mistaken, unless it's really late this year.
It'll, it'll change that night, Bill.
Changes that night on 31st?
Yeah, the morning of the 1st, yes.
Oh, then I'm mistaken.
Can I add something?
Yeah, Carolyn.
May, maybe what we can do, you know, is to give a recommended timeframe and to make that timeframe smaller. And in doing so, perhaps limit the opportunity and make people feel comfortable to make their own decisions in a smaller timeframe.
I think that makes sense.
Sure I do.
Okay. We had a nice discussion, good discussion. I hope we've given some consensus, if you will, of where we want to go moving forward and we'll be a little bit more clear if, if and when we get any more additional state mandates, et cetera, as it relates to COVID. I am gonna now call on each of our council members to have anything other than trick-or-treating on their minds for our regular council member reports. And we'll start with Alderman Morris from the First Ward on Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor. I will share that we had a family member test positive for COVID and as a result are observing a family 24-day quarantine because that was what the public. a result, are observing a family twenty-four-day quarantine, because that was what the public health department recommended, because we were not able to keep that child absolutely isolated from the rest of the family. So I do want to caution parents as you're actually considering going out for trick-or-treating, twenty-four days of quarantine is a very, very long time. And you really, it's not very easy to stay isolated from your child. So I just want to caution you and encourage you to recognize the risks associated with every decision as it relates to this pandemic. And that's all.
Thank you. Second ward, Alderman, Bill Sanouken?
Well, I again was going to do my bi-weekly mask-wearing mandate, but I think Carolyn just spoke to it very eloquently. So please continue to wear your mask. Maybe we can get away without going into further restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Smith from the third ward. Alderman Perkins, fourth ward.
No report.
And fifth ward, Scott McAdams.
Please make sure you filled out your census form. That is incredibly important for the entire city. Thank you.
Alderman Verbic, sixth ward.
Finishing touches are underway for the Home Two Suites project on Knolls Avenue South, and our new Pizza Hut building is being framed up and is progressing nicely. I'm sure to get a roof overhead before winter.
Alderman Favor, seventh ward.
No report.
Okay. City, City Clerk Physikas, any report?
No report.
City Manager Nicholas, anything additional tonight?
No report.
Okay, thank you. We are going to adjourn here. If the city council approves, I was moving into executive session. I'd like to suggest that we move into executive session to approve the session in order to discuss, number one, personnel as provided for in five I L C S one twenty slash two C one, and number two, to discuss pending or imminent litigation as provided for in five I L C S one twenty slash two C eleven. I'd like a motion to move into executive session. So moved.
Second?
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor, that we move into executive session. Any discussion? Roll call?
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Sanouken?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdam?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Prior to going into recess, I'd like to just remind City Clerk Physikas and Alderman Morris that because of the inconsistencies and the security issues with any remote meeting, such as Zoom, that we are going to excuse you, and I hope you understand why. We will be having Ruth Scott, our executive assistant, keep minutes in our executive session. So it's been moved and seconded, and we have approval to recess into executive session, which we will do. Thank you very much. We are now in executive session.